Okay, and then, oh whoops. I'm gonna share my screen. Fire away.
Okay. All right, we're calling this meeting to order. And let's start with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, religious standards, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. On our page to improve our agenda, we have a motion.
I'll move, will you through the agenda?
Do you agree? Do you want your second?
Second, yeah.
Seven. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Again, our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move, we accept.
Thank you so much, Patty. Second.
Second.
Arnie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? And so, motion carries. And first up, we have public input. And before we get started with that, could we come in?
That.
The long way. Okay. Um, do we still have anyone signed up for public input? Okay. So that, I'm not gonna read that, save time. And we're on to our items for information. Adopted ARs.
Um, so the adopted ARs were just ARs that would have been in second reading, but they don't need to be adopted by the board. So we were just letting you know that the ones you've already seen, we will be adopting. So I'll send them to OSBA after this meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
And now we have our MHS update from Joe Herbert.
Yep.
Yeah, you can, you want to?
Hello. Hi, I'm Joe Herbert. Uh, I'm the best physician for the ASB here at Markham. Um, I'm here on behalf of Valerie F., who would normally be doing these with you guys. But she and I both have soccer games. And then our president is also at soccer games, who is also a pinhead, so you're stuck with me.
You're black, you're American.
I'm here to talk about what's been going on for the start of the school year. We get everything kicked off and ready to go. Starting with sports. Soccer games today. Our soccer, our boys' soccer team is number three in the league, and they're picking on number one team in the league today. So they're looking to take a game from them and hope their standings and move on to the playoffs. Uh, girls have had a pretty tough year. Uh, not a lot of winning, but they have a very young team and it's looking to build upon that for the years to come. Uh, football is on a three-game winning streak. Last week taking our homecoming game. This week they're going to Henley to take on the number one team in state and the number two in the league. Uh, next week they're picking on the number twenty-sixth team in state. So hopefully a little bit easier game, carry on with them until the week after that, which is our senior night game against Missauk, which is the number three team in state and the number two in the league. So we have a pretty tough league this year for football. But there's a very good chance we can take both those games from Hidden Valley and Missauk. Students actually for those games have been pretty good. Not awesome, but pretty good. Um, definitely something that we'd like to build upon for basketball games and volleyball games. Volleyball has a game Wednesday against Marist, who is the number two team in the state and the two team in the league. Very tough volleyball league this year, too. Last game, we had tons of people come out. Just always wanted to get more people to come out, as an acting myself. It's also awesome to just, the environment is just better and feel better and fight better when they're standing there. Cross country has been doing really good. We just had a sophomore. His name's Jackson Stovall, he broke the record for the five K for sophomores with ten sixteen minutes and one seconds. Um, girls team is very strong, very young. Uh, we are looking to have five runners this year at district, which is very good for past years. Um, moving away from sports and just the school spirit. Last week we had homecoming and homecoming week, which we had a spirit day for all people. It was every day we had tons of people come out. Thursday was Mardi Gras day, which we didn't have a ton of people come to it, but Wednesday we had a round of reason, which is kind of weird, but tons of people dressed up for that, which is really good. Wednesday we also had fun on the field. And in past years, it's been awesome, people just started sitting around doing that. But lots of students today was fun and have, we have activities that they liked and stuff to do for the entire class. Homecoming, we had three hundred and seventy-five students attend, which is a huge number compared to other years. So it's just nice to have people participating in school activities that we have. Other, just MHS events that are coming up. The charity program has a, uh, activity kind of thing at Boston Books this Thursday. From six to eight, we're just raising money, having activities for all our kids to come and for parents to come and do with their kids. November eighth, we have a volleyball match against the North Bend charity program, which obviously we want to beat them. The first three sets are just like fun trying to win. And the last two sets are money round, where the people who are playing are up in the stands trying to get money from the crowd. So just trying to get as many people to come to that and raise as much money as possible. NHS adopted twenty new members back in the past two weeks, which is really good for them and there's more ways to get students involved in school. That's it for what's been happening. And this is my first year in ASB, so it's been awesome to see much behind scenes of ASB and what happens at school. Um, it's definitely a lot more than I realized in the past three years and kind of took it for granted, but it is super fun and super awesome to work with all those people. Even coming to talk to you guys today, it's just something new and it's helping me with stuff for the future if I go to college.
When?
When I go to college.
Our trade.
So that's pretty much it, thank you guys.
Thank you, Joe. Great, he gets shared with people in some places. Five. Ah, yes, okay. They would all be letting you come. Alright, so you're a senior this year?
Yes, I am.
That was a wonderful report. Sorry that you looked into it, but I'm glad that you're here actually. It's great experience. Okay, so CBA, Jeremy? Is he online?
Uh, he is not.
Do we have a, a stand-in for him to, someone that's gonna?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to OSBA business three. You can stand, you can sit, you can whirl around. Jeremy, I can stand. I did do that down in Madison tonight.
I'll bring up here.
Perfect.
Then you just, I forgot my clicker, so just tell me when you want me to switch.
Flip the page.
Yep.
Uh, we're trying something new this year to highlight some of our staff, our classified numbers in our school. And I'm still too far away because I have four visions, so I have to get real close to see what I wrote on my bullet points. Um, I just want to say, welcome back. We were not on the agenda for the last board meeting, so I wish I could have said that two weeks in September. But we're great to, uh, we're off to a great start to a new school year. And just kind of reminder of the people who are on our board. So myself as president, Loma Lani is the vice president, and he's located at the junior high. Terry Jones is our secretary, located at Madison. Brenda Gessberg is our treasurer, located here at MHS. And Shelley Fuller is in charge of our hospitality, and she's located at the district office. And I'm located a little bit everywhere. Um, we are currently working on MOUs for Just Cause, which I linked the Senate bill for that. If anybody would like me and hear things like that and want to know what it is. It's, um, it protects our workers to not be fired just at will and that there has to be Just Cause and steps, which our district already had a lot of that and our contract had been placed, so this was just kind of changing language to match the new law. And we're also working on one with Pay Leave Oregon that has come into effect, which we're matching the district policies on that, as well as one that is finished. And it was just to change our payroll date, our contract and not match the teacher's contract that had been signed in. And so we did this to make it easier on payroll, so we can all be on the same page and make Thank you. make our business office life a little bit easier. So if you could go to the next slide, please.
Yes. Got it.
And then, uh, something new that I had mentioned is just the classified staff spotlight. And so this will be elected members from our members in the future, but we kind of decided in honor of Band Book Week, um, which is the first week in October, that we would just like to recognize all of our members that work to keep our libraries responsive to the needs and interests of all of our students. If you could go to the next slide. Which I had realized that I did not put where these people work, but one of my goals with this is sometimes when you don't get to go into the buildings, like even for myself, I see people that I don't know their faces. And I thought this would be a fun way for you guys to know what our people are doing in schools and what their faces look like and kind of get exposure. Um, I have not told these people they were elected. Um, and so Tracy Howerton works at Eastside, Terry Jones works at Madison, and Karen Bones works at Mila Comma. Cynthia Schultz is at Sunset, Deanna Meyer, and this is her first year at the junior high. And then Gracie Jensen was at the junior high and is now up at the Marshall campus. So these are all of our people who run our library. They've taken on their home book challenges in this school and make sure that we have a place where children get to not only experience books, but they love books and have a wide variety of learning opportunities in their space. And that's pretty much my update from OSBA. If you guys have any questions or comments or? This is great. Yeah. And actually, that just topped it off. The cherry on top right there.
And it was hot, hot.
Oh, hot, hot. I like that highlighting of staff and who they are and what they do. I think that's extremely helpful. Sometimes we don't, we're bright, we don't get to see that. And so if we're not in there every day, it's really nice addition, thank you for that. Okay, um, I just want to go back to CBA. Anybody has come on for, in case?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Green, hello, we're here for our review discussion.
Alright. Well, I do have a couple of students here with me. Lomian Dubazar and Elliot Haley. I'd like to see to them to start the, uh, this, so they can tell you a little bit about their experiences with KMHS and, uh, you know, what programs have been. So, uh, hi guys, my name's Elliot. So like, what was it? Your experiences, what the program means to you, what you enjoy about it?
Oh, yeah, the radio program's awesome. I can't say enough good things about it, like, no other program in the school lets be expressed by creativity like the radio program does. Because not only do I, like, get to hear my voice on the radio, which is friggin' sick. I also get to, like, make videos, and making videos is so fun. That's also like another way to express my crazy creative brain. So I think that's like the best part of radio. Also, it gives me a lot of, like, feature live skills and advice, because I have to get stuff done on deadline. And I have to manage it all, so if I ever became a secretary or something, I could do that. It gives me just a lot of skills, not only just in radio and video, but in just generalized skills. That's all I gotta, gotta say about it, it's awesome.
Okay, so I'm Lily Dubazar. Like, I kind of tricked you to everybody before it started, but that's okay. So at the station, I do mostly just creative work. I write a lot of scripts, I have a folder of like a hundred scripts that I've written. And we could give those to the undergrads and just kind of work on, test their skills. I write and direct promotional videos, so I've done a couple of those and I have a few that I want to do that are kind of interesting. I did one over the summer that I haven't put up yet, but it's pretty cool. So, uh, I also take our group and individual pictures, our staff pictures for our website. And that's a positive thing I really enjoy. I do go to a lot of the sports games and events and stuff, and I do our social media, and a lot of the people let us that. And, uh, I did that for the volleyball game, it's actually pretty fun. I feel like not a lot of people are more interested in it, but it's pretty fun. And, um, the list does go on and on. I have a billion jobs, but I won't point you guys to the whole of that. So, uh, one of the events that we like to do every year, we, we host the media room for the three-year tournament. And we have like snacks and stuff, we have a couple managers that, um, hang out in there, make sure no one's stealing the equipment. There are a couple kids that like to go in there and steal snacks, so we left them pick a couple and then. Okay, guys. So there's a couple of us that hang out in there, make sure our meetings go good. We also livestream the tournament and stuff, so that's a really important role that we have. In competition themselves, we have competitions, let's see what we say. Are we, uh, supposed to say what we say? And then possibly other conferences that we might get up to, so.
How long have you been involved in radio?
Oh gosh. Um, since eighth grade, so like, I hear something.
Yeah. What about you, Elliot?
I think, I served like seconds in the freshman year, so.
What about you, Patty?
I think two and a half, too.
Are you Samson?
Yeah.
Yes.
And he doesn't see on the board, I see a pattern.
He was on the board, yeah.
He felt he'd like to go in too.
Yes.
Both of you?
Well, I mean, yeah, so, um, I definitely want to work in radio, kind of like the background stuff. I'm not really an on-air person, such as nothing. He is trying to get me to be on air, though.
We're gonna get her a talk show, she's already, she gave the idea herself, so.
Yeah, I am gonna have very, uh, kind of a video podcast thing where I'm gonna have a guest star. Once or twice a month, and I'm gonna talk to them about random stuff that people wouldn't know, so I think that's a kind of deal.
Yeah, not the, yeah, like, uh, like she was saying, we get to be also on air, like DJs, so we can have, um, I know Jesse Frickel. He has his own rock show that he puts on the radio station. Um, I'm gonna have my own show soon, like one where I just talk about baseball, the playoffs, and another one, I don't know what I'm gonna pull up, but I'm gonna bring like a random guest star and we're gonna debate, like, random stuff. Like, for example, this next one is like, like a bracket of thirty-two greats, and we like, from the best of them.
Alright.
All school appropriate.
That's very creativity and ownership. And I need you to give me a lot of, of seeds. And you too.
Alright, any further questions for them? Okay, I'm gonna take the podium, just because I like to see everyone. So, uh, really for me, I kind of wanted to leave it open to your questions, and then I just had a few points that I wanted to touch on for some, uh, station-related business. So I can either go first, or we can open to just general questions, then as I go through, anything pops up, whichever works best for all of you.
Since you're new here this year, would you give us like a little brief summary of, um, you know, your background and then what you experienced and what you're coming into?
Absolutely. Um, much like my two students here, I started my broadcast career on my high school's radio station in nineteen ninety-four, uh, which has been a little while ago. Ask your mom and dad about the nineties, it was a thing. But they, uh, that led into my professional broadcast career my sophomore year of college. I got offered a full-time radio job, and, uh, since the mid-nineties, I've been associated to broadcasting as a professional. I've worked in Florida, New York, uh, and Georgia, and in Indiana, where I'm from originally. And then in twenty sixteen, I had the opportunity, I was actually going to school to be an English teacher, uh, when I got the, uh, the radio bug bit me. And, um, in twenty sixteen, I got the opportunity to transition back to teaching broadcasting. Uh, my son's school had a radio station, and they actually needed a, uh, teacher, and they, just through mutual connection, I've hired a couple of students from the, uh, the radio program there. They reached out to me and wanted to know if I had interest in coming and teaching it. Uh, you know, we got together, we talked, and seven years later, here I am, still teaching it. But now, in the beautiful Pacific Northwest, uh, where the summer treated me so much nicer than Indiana summers have lately. So I really appreciated the, the mild climate, it was very nice actually being able to breathe the air without ninety-five percent humidity, you know, going on top of everything else, that was awesome. Feel like I could breathe in the summer, so, uh, but yeah, I've enjoyed my time so far. You know, I, I, the big thing that I've tried to impress upon everyone back home is this campus. I just am in love with it, I love the look, the architecture, the layout. I've taken so many pictures of it and sent it home to people, like, I, where was this? You know, my school looked like a warehouse for crying out loud. And then, and then I come and see this, and like, this is awesome, you know, like, I would have been more into school probably, if, you know, I would have had something like this to come to. So it, it's been a great experience so far, and, uh, I've got a great group of young men and women that I'm getting to know and getting to work with and enjoy that. And then, uh, unfortunately, I don't get to work with the, the staff as much as I'd like to, because we're out kind of on an island in KMHS. But I get the dart in the building from time to time to say hi and see some faces in the hallways real quick during pass interference. So, uh, the experience has been great so far.
Are you still doing the announcements in the morning?
Uh. No, they have not been doing the announcements on the radio station. That is on the ever-growing list of things that, uh, we would like to change about the way we've been doing things versus the past several years. So, uh, definitely looking to make the radio station more of a central, uh, point for communication for not just the school, but the district itself, uh, in getting and sharing information with the community at large.
Did, did you have a committee ahead of time where you got here?
Uh, I inherited the existing committee.
Okay.
And, uh, speaking of that, that is one thing, we're, we're going to be looking for board representation to join our committee as well, because, uh, as you well know, you are the owners of the, uh, radio station, so we, we think that it would be great to have a more open line of communication with you and what's going on with it. You know what the plans are, and, uh, hopefully developing a long-term vision for what it is and what it can become.
And so tell us a little bit about that time commitment for, for that committee.
The advisory committee will meet once in the fall and once in the spring. That is the minimum that is required by the state as a CTE program. Although I think with the nature of our program and the fact that it is a revenue generating program, that we may want to consider, you know, a couple of additional meetings. I wouldn't say more than four, uh, total, you know, so maybe once a quarter we get together and just discuss where we are and what's going on. Make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
And so four meetings, and we're looking for two board members, correct?
I think two would be excellent, as long as we can get one, I, I think that that would be great, but if we could do two, I, I think would be more ideal.
Is this later on in our agenda to, to?
It's a subsection of this, so you feel free to.
So, so let's, we can just go ahead with this, and since Chris has brought up, we need for a board member or two to be on the committee, committee. Do we have anybody that's interested?
Can, can I ask, like, what's your goal with the station and everything?
Long term, the goal would be for it to truly be a student-run radio station. I, I had met with, uh, Kim and Dave and earlier, uh, and just kind of gave them the, the brief nickel tour of what my goal was. And my goal is kind of what it was when I first transitioned over and starting, uh, started teaching in Indiana. That is, that it's a student staff. My objective would be to be there to make sure they're making the right decisions, which with proper training and education, we know they will. And, uh, just when they run into a hiccup, help correct it. But, uh, from students that actually schedule the music, uh, pick out the playlist, things of that nature, to, as Elliot was saying, you know, more in-depth accounting of taking care of our billing and services that way. Everything should be manned by a student, in my opinion. Uh, and, and that includes our sports broadcasting, which, uh, it is my understanding has never been a part of the program for the students since it's been here. It's never been available to them, and to me, that's actually the really fun part for the kids. So, yeah, uh, the goal is to build a, a truly student-run operation.
Thank you. I really wanted Arnie to, he, he was here actually with the inception of the radio station, so I think it will be wonderful to have him on board. Do we have anybody else that wants to be on it?
I'd like to do it if it's alright with my daughter.
So she was pointing at you.
Oh, you were? I'm the volunteer, yeah.
I think she nearly volunteered told you.
Well, I'd be committed to help out, that's for sure, but I just don't want to get in anyone's way.
Time and time meetings, I think it will give us some, you know, more insight, and especially since we learned about our role last, what, April, as the board.
Surprise.
Yeah, surprise, here's your, here's, here's what you guys own, um, and there's some things that need to happen with the radio station, so.
It is a pretty big investment, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is, and it's a wonderful thing for our community and our students, and I, I want it to continue and flourish throughout many years.
Yeah, just as an example of what it can be, uh, not that it's not been a great addition or anything already, but the, the school that I went to work for, uh, the station was W E E M. And after I took the job there, I started getting introduced to people who come up, are you the new radio guy? Yeah, I'm Chris, how are you? And they would introduce themselves and just put a username. Hi, I'm Kevin, I'm a Weemer from back in eighty-four. They, I mean, they still, thirty years later, were connected to the program and they, they had a name for themselves, they were Weemers, you know? And so I had so many people, I don't know what we would be, you know, MHSers or something, you know, but, you know, pirate broadcasters. But, you know, I would love for people to, you know, whether they spend a semester in the program or they spend, you know, their whole four or five years, I would love for them to walk away feeling that level of connection to this program as well.
Thank people for volunteering.
Absolutely. Oh, I, I over-prepared, so that's why I was kind of like, what, I was gonna give you a chance to kind of guide. Um, just, uh, boy, I've got examples of things, I've got, uh, I know that I, I had previously been questioned about, you know, some of the spending habits, things like that. So, uh, I'll just, I've got this information, I can share it with you, so I don't take up and hijack the whole meeting. But, uh, just from a bullet point standpoint, we have a car that has been sitting in front of the radio station for going on two years now, which was donated to us to use as a fundraiser, which is my understanding. As it continues to sit and rot, I would love permission to get rid of it. I've had three people offer to buy it from us that are staff members, I would love permission to get that thing out of it. And put those funds back into the program, one way or another. So, uh, I'm not sure who needs to sign up on everything, but I would love for that permission to come down.
I would say normally it would be Harris, and you guys can do it, but I don't know with the board being, I don't know how that goes. I know we don't want to do any kind of rotting, but you guys can get rid of some of the rules.
We have a property disposition policy from the board, and since this is district property, we just follow, um, the policy, and so we just have to put it out.
We'll need to follow it very closely if we intend to sell potentially to a staff member. So we'll want to make sure we follow that policy to a T, maybe we can meet and discuss that.
Absolutely. And I need to get some information about it anyway, before we would even know, an asking price, you know, find out year and all of that sort of stuff. I understand it does need a little bit of work, because it's been sitting, not running for over a year, so, uh, we'll have to look into that as well. But that is something, uh, within reason, the radio station to be able to fund any repairs or remain as working needs to get it up and going, so we can move it on down the road.
Perfect, I'm happy to, why don't you go ahead and send me an email?
Okay.
And then we can set something up, go over that policy, and, um, figure out what kind of car it is. Figure out all the information, I should have the title, so.
Um, the other quick bullet points I have, uh, live streaming. That is something that we've been doing for a while, but we That is something that we've been doing for a while, but we... So, I would like permission to, I've gotten quotes from Live 365. And the way we've not been doing properly is we've not been paying the royalties for streaming over the internet. So, I would like to get in compliance with that as quickly as possible. And I've got the quotes. It would be about a $1,600 investment annually. The great thing with Live 365 is they can put caps on. That's how you can know how much your bill would be in advance. So, I would like to get that going. They'll create accounts, of course. They'll pay our royalties for us out of the, the... But I just went totally blank. They would pay for us out of the funds that we would send them. And then, of course, the rest would be their fees for providing the streaming service to us.
So, on that one, does that mean we would have to sign up and then pay to be able to watch graduation or ceremonies?
No, that's free. That would be more like through our YouTube channel, which would be a free stream.
Okay.
This is for rebroadcasting music.
Okay.
We haven't been paying the royalties for the music we've been rebroadcasting over the internet. So, before someone gets upset with this, I'd like to correct that. Also, just as a way to get into compliance with some of the FCC regulations and things, and also some of our actual physical facilities in relation to the transmitters and all of that, I would like to suggest joining the Oregon Association of Broadcasters. They offer an alternative inspection program, which is an FCC inspection. But the purpose of these inspections is to give you a chance to know where you're at, what you need to correct before an actual FCC inspection may happen. At which point, that's when they come in, tell you what's wrong, and give you a very limited amount of time to fix it before they start sending you fines. Whereas the alternative inspection, they'll give you an extended period of time to begin working on it. You don't have to fix everything, but they need to see the progress. So, it's not necessarily a get-out-of-jail-free card, but it is a, you've got time to get your house in order card.
Are all of these things you've mentioned so far, because none of them sound that cost-heavy, are they things that can come out of the sale of that car?
They could, yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we could pay for a two-years' worth of streaming out of the car, probably. Yeah. Yeah, and we do generate some revenue. We need to address the way we spend some of that revenue. Again, that would be in one of the handouts that I have for you just to give you an idea of the way spending has happened. I think we could do it in a much more responsible manner with the funds we have available to us. And some of the deficiencies that were brought up in the spring meeting, I think could have and should have been addressed with those funds over the years. But they have been redirected to third-party vendors, who are doing quite well, thanks to the radio stations. I would like to talk about three more things, just real quick. Again, with the spending, this would fall under that. 91.3 is designated as a non-commercial educational station, which means that from its financial standpoint, it needs to end the year at a zero balance. It should not have money in its funds. It should be redirected into the program, and that's an actual rule for it. And we've carried quite a hefty balance here over a year. So, some of that, again, I went back to saying, we could have been taking care of some of the things that, you know, were listed as deficiencies with like our facility and whatnot. We could have been taking care of long ago, but I would like to be more proactive in taking care of that going forward. Secondly, I would like to discuss potentially adding Fox Sports Radio to our 1420 and 105.1 signals, which they are designated commercial radio stations. And I think that programming would lend itself to the amount of sports we already carry with Marshfield Sports Events and whatnot. And I think it could generate some potential additional revenue streams for us through the sports broadcasting. We would have the option of looking at adding NFL broadcasts, college football broadcasts, NCAA basketball tournaments, things like that. I think that would be something for us to explore. And then the last thing that I have, I think this is the fun part. I would like to establish at least a monthly, if not a bi-monthly, show with board members and possibly even our superintendent, again, to promote what we're doing as a district, not just as a radio station or as Marshfield High School, but I think as a whole, to promote the district, I think would be a fantastic addition. And would also help us with our public file commitments that we have, as a matter of fact, due tomorrow to post up to the FCC website. So, news, public information, things of that are all part of that. And those are all things that we're looking to build and add and re-add to what we're doing. And of course, most of my great students like these, two fine students, came to join us tonight, along with all of you, of course. Yes.
So, the only other question I have is, is Robin still working for the district?
Ah, well, Robin, just over the weekend, informed me that it's time to move on.
That's right.
Yeah. I, I think Robin's had more contact with me than he had with Drew over the last few years, since I've been here in August. And he said that it's time to turn it over to someone else. And in the interest of, since you brought it up, I do have a national engineering firm that I've worked with over the years. I've already spoken to them just to see if they have availability to help us out. If we get in a pinch, they do, they're interested. But I think at some point, we're going to have to look at possibly a retainer for an engineering firm based here in Oregon or Washington or Northern California that would have accessibility to us in times of, especially, I know you went through a lightning strike and a tower going down over the years. So, in those, hey, we need somebody right now. We need to responsibly look and find somebody who can do the maintenance on our property for us.
Well, I found out Saturday, we have two engineers on our board meeting.
How many kids are in the program?
Right now, combined, we are at a little less than 50. Ideally, I would love to see it at 100 or more. So, we've got room to grow. Yes.
Where do you see, like, in the next few years, the future of radio? And what's kind of the trends that are happening in radio?
You know, one of the interesting things is it's, for a long time, it's been a medium that people have said is dying or is dead. But yet, when you look at some of the trends in current media, they're all audio-based solutions, from podcasts to, there was even an attempt at a social media platform that was all about just being able to connect voice-to-voice. So, you know, it's still a relevant platform. And part of the relevancy is the fact that the lines between mediums have blurred to the point that there's really not a line anymore. Radio does video, video does audio, so on and so forth. We all are writers now. So, it's a good cross-platform for many different disciplines nowadays. And when you talk into, you know, the creator economy that we're moving into with more social media stars and things like that, this is the sort of program that can begin training future content creators as well. So, I think there's still a lot of relevancy to it. The delivery platforms may change over the years. I know in, I believe it was Morway, they just closed their FM band and everyone moved online. That way, they freed up for more digital cellphone use, things of that nature, to use the frequency. But they didn't actually see a dip in revenues when they transferred over to their online properties. So, I think the United States, I think, is still a ways away from that because I think we like what we like. I think we're pretty set in our ways in so many ways. Because, like I said, as many people might say, radio is a dead medium. I wonder why people still print newspapers? I still read the newspaper. I just never buy a physical one anymore. I have only online subscriptions now. So, I think there's still a long, healthy future for it because it's also been one of the more adaptable mediums. And I think the thing that's always kept it just ahead of the curve is the fact that it's got the ability to be now. You know, when news happens, just for instance, you know, if there's a major fire, well, I can use a real-world experience. May, Memorial Day, 2019, there was a tornado in my hometown, about a mile from our radio station, literally right across the street from my house. And as soon as I was sure that my house was okay and my family was okay, I was at the radio station, and I broadcast for nearly 36 hours straight. And we became the focal point for the town's emergency management, for Red Cross, for the Sheriff's Department, let alone our school. And we were the ones keeping the town up to date. We couldn't get the newspaper out. The way the tornado ripped through the town, they couldn't get TV crews out to us till the next day. But that night, we were on the radio station, letting the town know what was going on.
Don't need radio. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, wait one second. Because we are going to be voting on something here, or consider the mock audit of the radio station. Can you explain that?
Okay. So, the mock audit, what they will do, they will come out. There are certain standards that the FCC sets for everything, from your physical structure to your towers, your antennas. Are you broadcasting within your allotted frequency band, the amount of power? For instance, right now, 91.3 has been operating for over a year at half-power, not even on our main transmitter, because we loaned out a piece of our main transmitter to assist the radio station in Kokea. And they still have our equipment. So, we're operating below power, which is actually, for the extended amount of time, unless we file paperwork to alert the FCC, we're actually out of compliance in that realm. So, this is one of those things where that inspector would come in, they would ask, "Okay, this isn't right. Why is this this way?" We would explain to them. They'd say, "You got to fix that." They would look at the tower. "Okay, your tower's supposed to be 199 feet. I flew my drone up it. It's 202 feet. You're too tall. You're going to have to move down your tower." You know, they'll tell you everything. And the last time I went through one, I mean, the guy had a legal pad, and he just... And he got about halfway through it before I walked in the building going, "Oh, my God." I mean, we got ding for the room where we had our files stored, you know, for our sales and our traffic logs and things of that nature. The light was out. That could have been a finable thing because it was a safety hazard. And the FCC will enforce the safety hazards as well when it comes to the stations. We had our AM station. This is where I walked away. They have what they call a doghouse, which is a small structure around the transmitter. You have a dedicated AM transmitter. And he went to open the door up so he could look at the transmitter, and the thing fell off in his hand. And by the thing, I mean the door. He pulled it, and it fell off the hinges where the wood had rotted. And that's where I walked away and said, "Yeah, I'm done." He's not, but I am.
So, your recommendation for the board would be to enter into this mock audit of the radio station so we can figure out what our...
Gives us a good baseline for where we are, making sure that we're in compliance with all rules and regulations that we're supposed to be in line with, and avoid any potential fines or levies put against us by the FCC.
And the alternative is to not do that and carry on as we have been? And this comes with a small price tag, right?
Yeah, the audit, I am waiting for the actual price. But the membership, they do it for members. The membership is less than $300 to OAB for the year. And then the audit itself, if I remember right, in Indiana, we paid right at $1,000 for it. So, I would say it's right around there. But that's an expense the radio station can carry right now. So, we just need the approval to be able to sign up for membership and then to move forward with the inspection.
So, after the audit or before the audit, and like with all of these rules, is that something that you manage normally? Like, okay, normally you're going to keep all of these things in checks and balance so when that CC shows up? And, you know, who manages to make sure that we're always in role-wise?
That at a station would be designated as your chief operator in a traditional setting. And we do not have a chief operator at this time. I would assume that that role would fall to me in life, anyone else wanting to step up and be that person.
I thought that was in your job description.
And that's not correct.
That would, that would not be a student role. That would be somebody that when the FCC shows up, they would look at me and they'd say, "Come on, let's go." And I would have to say, "Give me a second to get someone in my classroom," and then go. They, I would have to be the one responsible for taking them out to the transmitter site, showing them the facilities, all of that sort of stuff. And then the one making sure that our public file is updated when it's supposed to be updated, which tomorrow is the deadline for the update. So, we'll make sure that we are absolutely updated on that tomorrow. Transmitter reading so that you make sure you're operating within your parameters, your power parameters, so that your signal's not interfering with anyone else. And as odd as it sounds, they don't want you to be overpowered, but they also don't want you underpowered because they give you this space, please occupy that space, you know?
Because if we're not going to give it to you, if you're not going to use it, we'll give it to someone else.
They absolutely could look at that. That just happened in, I want to say it was Minnesota, and it happened to a high school radio station. They were fundraising to increase their power, and another company came in and said, "We like that signal. We know it can be this big. We'll take it." And the FCC granted it. So, they're currently looking for a new signal, and they're not easy to come by.
With this mock audit, could it potentially shut our radio station down or...?
The mock, no.
Okay.
No. An actual audit in place of that could. And I do have some very specific concerns that I could address with you individually that have come up through conversation with Robin, our engineer, that could see some of that potential.
I think that though, like, all the great plans that you have for the radio station and probably those individual conversations would be great with the committee. And I'm assuming Harris would be a part of that as well. And probably Marina with the budget. And so, and then the purpose of the committee, when you guys meet, you guys can come to the board meeting. We'll probably have you, like we discussed, and you can give us an update on the wonderful things that you're doing. And hopefully, we're not fined and everything's going well.
I would love to never see that letter show up. And as I informed you, since you're the head of the board, that would actually be coming in your name. So, you'd have to tell me all about that.
And remember, the purpose of the committee, basically, is because it's a technical program. So, the other people on the committee are people who know radio and are giving information to the radio station so that we are meeting the standards that these kids would allow you, if they want to get it out on the radio. So, that's really what the committee's got. This other information, he's going to have to give in for us. So, we should know something.
And I think we had talked about you coming in at a few board meetings to give us updates.
Yeah. One of the things that I was working on based off that conversation, and I do have an example one that I put together for review of version one of a memo of understanding. We have some professional staff members that have been working with the radio station for years. None of them are under any sort of MOU or agreement with the schools. They're not technically void by the schools. So, that is something I would like to change so that everyone's held accountable the same way. So, I can, I'll just hand this to you since you're right here. This is just an example one I made. It's by no means a, this is what it should be. It's just kind of where I thought it could start.
It's back in the day when you spent...
Oh, it's, it took three pages for me to write it the way I thought it would go.
And we, we have an organ of personal services agreement that people have to meet in order to be an independent contractor, essentially, which is what they'd be. So, you and I can sit down and go through that, too. The district has some policies regarding who qualifies for that and how they would be paid.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and then, let me see, I kind of got off track there. I'm looking through all my stack here. The other thing was talking about potentially setting a budget for the radio station. And I thought I made one. See, I said I over-prepare, and I've got this giant stack here. Ah, here's the one I'm looking for. Now, this one I did make copies of for everyone. This is, this is less a budget and more a, this is how we spent it last year. So, you can kind of see the way it's been going and where I feel it needs to see some changes. I only identified items that were $500 or more that we spent last year. We took in a little over $130,000, and combined, we spent about 98 of that, with $82,000 of it going to two individuals. And I think that we need to be a little bit more responsible with that. As I mentioned earlier, we could have taken care of a lot of the technical and physical needs. Last year, we spent, you find it here, we spent a little over $2,000 on engineering needs last year versus $82,000 plus we spent on people calling our ballgames and being our official representative for sales and marketing. So, there are a lot of things we could do differently with it. But, and I think one of the things, too, I think any expenditures, we can set a point, like, for instance, for this, I just picked anything $500 or greater. But I think, again, with you as the owners... But I think, again, with you as the owners of the radio station, I think there needs to be some limit that says, hey, for purchases in excess of this amount, you need board approval. Because I, I can't under, imagine that it's any different than any other department or group with the school system that they're just freely spending.
This revenue and these expenditures, do they, are they run through our finance department?
No.
No. Okay, that should change.
Yes.
So that's a future discussion, we need to review.
Especially if the amount we're talking, I think it needs some oversight versus some handshakes because I asked for a copy of our salesperson's agreement, so I knew how his pay structure worked and he doesn't have one. It was just a conversation and a handshake 20 some years ago.
Yeah. Okay, well, it sounds like there's a lot of things that need to be caught up. I wanna move the vote up for the mock audit of the radio station, since we just had that discussion that's fresh on our minds. So do I have a motion for approving a mock audit? Thank you, Arnie. Second? Second. Any discussion, questions about that? All right, let's do a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Arnie?
Aye.
About Ismael, motion carries, thank you.
All right, I will get that process started in the morning.
All right. Yay.
We'll have a long meeting.
Yes, we're gonna give lots of?
I'll get a, I'll get a sub one day.
That sounds great, I can, I can do it after school, that is fine too.
I, right now, it's just me here, so I'm here all the time.
I see.
If you ever need to find me, you'll find me right back at AMHS or volunteering at Vol.
Thank you and welcome to our district. I'm really happy to hear that you're sitting across the other places of our district. I'm sitting here, I would never imagine that.
You know, Indiana's flat, so seeing these big hilly things out here, that's really amazing.
Yes.
So the ones here that are marked not gay, yep?
Yes.
These are, these are companies whose music we have brought, who they own the music that we brought out through.
Correct, so on those, we have not set up accounts with CSAC, GMR, Alltrack. Sound Exchange and World Collections are internet-based royalty companies and the purchasing of the Live 365 subscription will cover those. And that way too, those are the only ones we can budget for, the rest of them, there's a whole formula that at one point in time I knew, but I just started writing checks and was trying to figure it out myself.
So Skills USA, are you going to continue that? And last year, didn't they go to Atlanta? Are you guys, where is it this year?
So the way it works is we have state competition for Skills USA and any winners, as I understand, are then invited to the national competition. Last year was in Atlanta, I think it's this year, I think it's Atlanta as well. But one of the things I would like to explore is joining the intercollegiate broadcasting system and/or College Broadcasters Incorporated. They have student-led conferences and media competitions. The intercollegiate broadcasting system is every spring in Manhattan and it's been there for over 70 years and they do high school, college. There's even some middle schools and elementary schools that go and compete with their radio programs that they have. And, was that?
Private.
Public. I was blown away when I found out about the elementary one. I was like, tell me all about you, because I'm, now I wanna know, because I'd probably have to take that back to my district now, so. College broadcasters, they travel every year, theirs is in Orlando, it's in the fall, it's next month, so this year would kind of be out of question, but next year it is in Seattle, so that would be a potential for us to go and do a dedicated event that is all about student media versus, with Skills USA, they do a lot of great things, but there's literally one category for video and one category for audio. And that's the limit of what they do. So I think, while it's a great program, I think there would be a lot more benefit to the program that we run by associating more to a student media-based program.
That one is wonderful, thank you, Derek, your energy and excitement.
Yes.
So now, business office update, Marina.
Hello, so on page 16 in your packets, you'll see an updated student enrollment. Good news is we are up from September numbers by 17. Yeah, yay. Most of them are at the high school, Eli is so thrilled, I'm sure. They're up 13 since September, so that's great news since school started, we've gotten 17 more students in the district in total. What I do want to mention is that since June, we're actually up 59 students. In comparison though, to last October, we're down 40. So there is a significant decrease throughout the year. It would appear from October through June, we decreased consistently, but we are up from September, we're hoping for consistent, if not increasing numbers, that is my hope. We have talked that enrollment is down the last couple of years since COVID. I did do some looking into Candace's numbers that she's presented to you, so it could all be consistent numbers. So since 2015, I looked at October's numbers and we're actually only about 10 students different than we were in October of 2015. There are ebbs and flows throughout the years, but in a, in a whole, we're pretty consistent over the last couple of years, within 100 students, which is a significant number in the budget, but it does come and it does go. Currently, we are on a downtrend and I am hopeful that soon we'll be seeing some increases. Last year, October, we did have significantly higher numbers, about 3,100. But I'm hopeful that we can stay consistent and stick with our, our numbers are about 3,075, 3,100, that's what we're averaging the last eight years. So I'm hopeful that we will stay consistent. I'll keep you updated on all of this, I'll keep, I'm gonna keep comparing the last eight years just so we can see a good track over time, since I'm new to the district, Karis is relatively new to the district. I want us all to be aware of not just this snapshot, but the trends. Yes, and then on page 17, I mentioned last meeting that you'll be getting some new financial reports. This is what they'll be looking like each month. This is from our forecasting software, it's called Forecast Five, a lot of the districts in Oregon use it. It's a really great tool where each month I upload data from our finance software and it implicit based upon the last number of years since we've been using it, it's been eight years, probably about the same. They have all of our data and they can track what percentage we spend roughly a month of X account or salaries and it can track pretty good what our annual expenses will be, or annual revenues will be. And so that's what this is for the general fund, this page 17. You'll see the first column on the left is our year-to-date actual for last year. So you'll see last year's July 1 to September 30, here's what we spent and then the percentage of what that was to our total actual expenditures. And then the third column, you'll see adopted budget, that's the current year adopted budget, 23, 24. The next column being our July through September actuals, the percentage of our budgets. And then what the system is forecasting our annual amount will be for each, each line item. And then whether or not that's favorable or unfavorable to our budget. So nothing significant is popping out at this time because we are so new in the year. I will touch on a couple of things that are down. You'll see that local sources is down, or it's projected to be down about 21,000. That's purely because LGIP property taxes, October 1st is when the new bills go out, so the increased amounts all flood in in November. So you'll see a huge increase in November and then that trend will be appropriate. It can't accurately project what we're going to have because it doesn't know how much our property taxes will be increasing. So when I present November's numbers in December, you'll have a really good idea of what we'll be seeing. And then $203 were projected to be down in intermediate sources. That's purely county taxes and heavy equipment sales. We get a small percentage of what the county does, so it's ever varying. I don't think $203 is going to be a significant blip in the radar, but we are projecting to be down in that, not the other way. Depending on the budget. So then if you keep going down under requirements, I am presenting this on the functions because that is probably budget as a district. It looks like before you got, you guys thought in objects and I'm happy to present that as well. But for, when we're looking at budget and maintaining our levels of budgeting appropriations, I want to present the functions, because that's how we budget for, by major functions. So the only real increases so far is under instruction. That's because that's where our lighthouse and resourcing state school fund expenditures come out of. We pay those out of 1,288 function. And we did not budget for an increase in school funding expenditure, so because state school fund went up to 10.3, so did our expenditures. So that's why it's projecting that we're going to be over on that expenditure line. And then support services, that, there is no real prediction for that because that is a variety of sources, that miscellaneous time cards, that's principal budgets, that is varying, but they're all within their means. They're projecting that we're going to be over, we'll monitor this, they won't actually go over, but that's what the, that's what the all-know genie in Forecast Five is saying at this time, but I'll keep track of it and I'll present that to you guys each month. The next page is special revenue funds. Okay, sorry.
Do we need to make a cast resolution because we did get more money adjusted at some point?
Yes, so that is on my radar, but I want to wait and do that until we get a little farther in the year and we can see if there's anything else that we need to include. It sounds like there is potential that we will be receiving peak physical education grants. That was not on the radar, but legislation changed the number of special education minutes and so with that, it extended the grant opportunities, but we did not budget for that grant. So once we know if we'll be receiving that, we talked about adding that into the budget as well. So my hope is like December, you'll get a supplemental budget.
We have radio in there.
I'll have the increases. Yeah, everybody wants, we'll see. We'll see, by then I might have like ending fund balance, it'll be great, we'll have a clean supplemental budget. Does anyone have any more questions on the general funds? Okay, so special revenue funds, this is a little, this one's a little more challenging to predict because it's all of our student body accounts, it's our child nutrition, it's our grants. So they're, right now, they're projecting some unfavorable balances and revenues. That's purely because we, we do quarterly grant planning, so all of our revenues for the expenses that happen July through September, that'll happen like October 3rd.
So it's drawdowns?
It's drawdowns and so we'll be seeing a large inflation of money in, in October. It hasn't always been done like that, but that's the easiest way to track it all and so you'll see a huge influx next month. And same for expenditures, it all depends on what projects we're doing. This year, we have a lot of SER expenditures that are happening at the beginning of the year because it's a melanoma project, so it's projecting, hey, you spent this huge amount of money at the beginning of the year, but that won't continue. We have a finite grant budget, we won't over the. Does anyone have any more questions on special revenues? Great. Debt service, this one's very clean. Again, the only thing unfavorable that it's projecting is our local sources, that will be property taxes come November. We'll get a huge influx of revenue in November. It's usually November and March, we get 95% of our property taxes and then the rest dwindles the rest of the year. And then for capital projects, the last page. So you'll see under other sources of revenue, it's projecting an unfavorable amount of 1,071,000. That's because I have not done transfers in yet, so I haven't moved any money out of general fund into this fund yet. We do that when the audit is done, so that way we're not moving money unnecessarily. And same for the requirements, it's predicting that we'll be over expense on the facilities acquisition and construction, that's just because we're doing the majority of our construction at the beginning of the year, they're getting a huge chunk of melanoma done now, we won't continue to be spending at this rate. We're not going to be issuing $1.3 million checks on a regular basis as we have cut recently. So everything isn't very on track, there's nothing that I'm surprised, you guys will obviously know anywhere, come the next couple of months when the audit is done, we have binary beginning balance numbers, but everything is looking really, really on track for the budget. I am pleasantly surprised. Yeah, does anyone else have any question? Are you guys okay with these reports? Is this helpful to you guys?
I'm good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here, our party audience members too. I, first of all, I wanna offer a special thanks to my colleagues. Due to medical issues, I've been out of the office the last few weeks and I'm on a reduced schedule now and so that's, my absence adds a tremendous burden on staff. For example, these two, David and Marina and the cabinet in particular have had to pick up a lot of responsibilities because I've been absent, so I just wanna say thank you. I really appreciate you all giving me the time and space and I know you all, it's an excellent hands with our, my great colleagues. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for the support. And then I just have a few updates. I wanted to spend just a quick beginning on instruction. I love talking about instruction, just a few things. I went to, with Addie, we went to the site council meeting here at the high school and there is a big push, Mr. Ashton is leading big instructional focus on ADDID, using the ADDID skills training, really going school-wide. And the junior high just got accepted to become an ADDID school. So we're going to be able to build a 7th through 12th program, which would be really nice because that consistency, those students, the younger they start using those skills, the more they become automatic by the time they're in upper grades. So I'm really excited about that work. Congratulations to the junior high, thank you, Mr. Montiel. And then the high school is also taking on proficiency grading, which is a really big lift, but it will really focus on what the power standards, what the priorities student learning is going to be and be able to give students in mailing a lot more specific feedback on student learning. But it's gonna take about three years to fully implement, but they've launched that this year, so that's pretty exciting work. And then for K6, I don't know, I hope you all recall when Principal Kara Davidson from Eastside was here in June and shared with you how we got selected to be in the Oregon RTI Response to Intervention cohort. We applied, we got accepted. We have a big group of K6 folks going tomorrow and Tuesday to the state conference to go in-depth training and we had a coach in the district last week going around to our schools and that is really going to help us get the expertise, training and support to build our multi-tiered system of supports so that it can really help move the needle so we can make sure we're individualizing the supports to every student's unique needs, which of course directly relates to our second goal in the strategic plan around each student prepared for academic success. So it's building those academic support systems and interventions to make sure that we keep our students on track. So pretty exciting, I, I hope the conference goes really well for them. I was going to attend, but unfortunately I can't, but I'm excited to hear how it goes for them. I also wanted, on another subject, I wanted to give you an update on all the audits going on. I shared with you last month that ODE has selected us for five audits this fall, so I wanted to give you an update. We have some good news. First of all, our Title 1A audit, we started in the spring, it ended at the end of September and we were successful. We had a positive results from the state, so in part of that, each K8 building, our So, um, and part of that, each K A building, our title schools, Title 1 schools and all of our K A schools or title schools in this district wrote their school improvement plans. We can submit it in the winter this year. And we're going to try to share those, have the principals come on October 23rd at the data work session, kind of share with you all the school improvement goals that was part of that audit. Were required and titled to have plans and we aligned it to the strategic plan. So it's really nice to start have some coherence and alignment in the system. So that one's done, one down. So thank you, Lisa DeSalio, Jenny Nelson, all the folks, Marina, who worked hard on getting that done, and Chad. Then we have two special education audits that were going on. One is the financial, we can talk about the maintenance and effort issue. That isn't due until the end of June, we have a full year. But I know Jenny Nelson and Lisa and Marina, they're working hard on getting as many exceptions as we can so we can get that maintenance of effort down. So they're working hard, they've come up with an innovative approach. They're working on it, right? And they're going to share it with ODE and hope to get their green light. But preliminarily, they, they thought it looked good. So I'm hopeful that it won't be the full $500,000 amounts that we are looking at at the moment. So, um, and then the other special education audit has started. And that's what they call a general supervision audit, where they do a file review of our students' IEPs. And so we have to submit 20 IEPs grades K through six and 20 grade seven through 12, where they go through and they audit it to make sure we're meeting all of the IDEA, which is the Individual Disability Education Act, federal laws and state laws around our individualized education plans for our students. And we have completed the seven 12. They've done their 20 file review. And then the K six file review is on October 19th. And so Lisa DeSalio, they're doing a great job being on top of that. It's going to be, it's due by January 15th, but we're already halfway there. So really proud of the great work they're doing. And then the fourth one is our Esser audit. They picked 20 districts out of the 200, didn't you remember? Lucky 20. And that's, Esser stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So these are the, the COVID relief funds we received from the federal government. The feds are making the state audit how the money's being spent. And the state picked us as one of the 20 districts to be audited. We did, Marina, Chad and I had, were required to do an entrance meeting for the monitoring. We did that last week, Marina, Chad and I. I think it went pretty well. Went really well. I think we got them, I would estimate 80 to 90% of what they need. What the last big lift is it going to fall on for Marina? It's, they need a ton of financial documentation about how we expended the funds and make sure that we followed our procurement and purchasing policies. And so she is, it's going to fall on Marina to get, to do a lot of detective forensic work to get all the, because this goes back Esser 1, Esser 2, Esser 3, so it goes back four year, you know, three or four years. So, um, but I think we're in a pretty good spot. It went well last week.
And our Esser funds are audited regularly through our single audit with our financial auditors. So, um, I would expect there shouldn't be no issues. They're audited very thoroughly.
I think the reason that we got flagged is because we had so much money left because we budgeted 80% of it for melanoma and it's all being expended this year. So the state wanted to look into some of the districts. One of the criteria for selection was districts that still had a lot of money left to spend. And what the plan was, well, we have a very detailed plan for how we're spending that money. So when we explained that, it, it made sense to them. So, um, and then finally, the fifth audit is our Title 3 English Language Murders Audit we got randomly selected for. Lisa DeSalio did contact ODE, asked her your advice, and we got that pushed back. And that's going to be April 1st, it's due. So we can get through the IDEA and the Esser audits and then start in the winter working on the ELO audit. So I'm very proud of everyone for really being on top of this, these five, because no other superintendent I've spoken to has more than one or two going on. So this is unusual. Got so many at once. And then my last little piece, just some recognition, because you know I like to do those. First of all, I want to say congratulations to our wonderful Regional Teacher of the Year, Glenn Crook, our Manufacturing Teacher, he won, representing us. And I'm sad I missed that assembly. Did any of you go?
Yes.
I'm so sad I missed it. Was it wonderful?
It was great. And the best part was his face.
Yeah, he really has no logic. He was surprised.
His face, but he, he didn't want to even, he was like, oh, no, I gotta go down there.
He's such the type of person who just does not want any second public representation whatsoever. And so all of his friends in the district showed up just to see him be as embarrassed as possible.
So true friends are fun.
And his wife, Cass, guys, and she said, I had to keep this as a secret and I knew about it and it's hard.
He did a great job.
Anyway, I'm so sad I missed it, but I'm so proud of, he does such amazing work. I got to see, he gave me a tour of the student work products for the competition in the spring. They do amazing metalwork, just incredible. So impressed. Anyway, so congratulations. Thank you, Glenn, for all you do. I'm glad you got well-deserved recognition. Um, I would also like to note today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. So some people, it's a holiday. I just want to say thank you to the contributions from our indigenous, our native community. They make incredible contributions and are invaluable stewards of our land and recognize the incredible work. So people, on behalf of, particularly we're close with the Coquell tribe. We work closely with them and just so appreciative. And Bree was sharing with me earlier about how some of the push-in work that the Coquell tribe is going to be doing directly in our schools, supporting students now. It was really exciting. So thank you, Bree, for organizing all of that. It is also National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is from September 15th to October 15th. That is our largest group of non-white students in the district, so about, you know, 30% of our students. So completely want to recognize the contributions of our Latinx community here in Cusay. And I want to give a special shout out. Last year, there was a Latinx Culture Club started here at Marshville High School for the first time. And they're starting here too. They're the student group for people who are interested in Latinx culture. They can participate. I spoke to Melinda, she's one of the, tried one of the organizers today, Anne Rodriguez. They're doing amazing work. And on Wednesday, they told me they're going to be bringing Mexican candies with information about their next meeting to try to hand out to get more students to come. So I'm really excited about the work they're doing to support our Latinx students. It's also National School Lunch Week. Are you all going to go have lunches in the school?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
You have some lunches. So I hope you all get to enjoy that. And I'm just really appreciative of our nutrition services workers. They are all so professional, so kind, so supportive of the students and they're great to work with. So I want to say thank you to them. It is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month and National Bullying Prevention Month.
And National In-Do.
Oh, thank you. But I think all of those things are the important, I'm so thankful for the first goal of our strategic plan, where we're looking at the whole child and making, wanting schools to be a safe place and help building a safer community. So I just want to do a shout out. I know the Social Emotional Learning Work Group is doing a tremendous amount of work in the district to make sure that we are, making sure that every student is safe and supported at school. So thank you for all of that work. And finally, it's also, as we already heard this morning, earlier, it's Fan Book Week, but it's also National Book Month. That's part of National Book Month. So we already had it, so thank you for that said perfectly. We go, thank you for all the library services we offer to make our students fall in love with reading. And then finally, this was also mentioned, I want to invite everyone here to come to the Marshville Gym at 6:30 on Wednesday night. I know you can't, but everyone else, wear all your Marshfield links. We want to pack the gym because our state champion volleyball, number one, is playing number two, Maris. And Maris beat us when we were there a couple of weeks ago. This is revenge match. We're going to show them we're number one, why we're number one. And so we need to pack that gym to support those amazing athletes. They're, they were incredible. So that's my report this evening.
Wonderful. What was your chant after the report? Lots of things to celebrate.
Yeah.
And lots of people to thank and honor today. Are there any questions for the, from either of our sheets? Okay, so next up, we are at Board Member Highlights.
Sorry, I have to say, I have a couple of things, but beginning of the school year, I really have to talk to you. I was invited to speak to the whole school district. I really appreciated that. I had a great time about the fun being on the state gym, where I've been many times before. So that was kind of fun. And then the North Bend volleyball match was awesome. And they talked about how many kids were here. It was, it was, it was kind of fun to see when we had a whole lot more kids here. So it was really exciting. And I went and Freeman said, it was kind of shocking for me. It was a great evening. I know that the crowd helped, so again, I would hope everybody to thank.
And I will say, because I was at that game also, do not sit below. My husband and I had no idea where we were. We got right in the middle of the students and the problem isn't that we were in the middle of the students, but they stood all the time. And so we were like this, we're standing up.
That's about it.
Go stand. Yeah, I was going to mention that. That was a wonderful game. And I said something to the volleyball team, thought my way into it. I also went to the site council meeting and we were given homework. One of the main things that they're going to be doing through site council at the high school this year is developing a mission statement. The high school does not have a mission statement. And it's, no, and well, they don't have. And so they're, I'm going to, they'd like us to look at wording and things that might help them dovetail with the district, but also share the vision of what they have for the school. I am having lunch with the kids tomorrow and I'm going to be at judge with speech and debate on Saturday.
Okay, so I spent another wonderful day at the E S D for their second round of strategic planning. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the follow-up two-hour Zoom meeting because I had a.
Good for you.
Let's see, also was at the assembly for Mr. Kirk, which was really great to see. And did attend the volleyball match against Portland. Which is great, I haven't been able to watch a volleyball game probably here in a while.
I haven't done a lot. I've been busy a lot. I did get to the game, which was amazing. So much fun. I do want to say thank you to Bree. She has taken on a project with a kiddo at Marshville Junior High School and kind of gotten a thumbs up from Floyd. And Sam Beckett is also helping with some indigenous projects at the junior high. It's really awesome. So thank you, Bree, for dedicating some, some time to that. So that's very exciting, really, for that.
I mean, thank you.
There's some stories.
There was a story.
Well, I'm just glad it's happening. It's wonderful. And I think that is, that's all I got for that, sorry. No, that's more than enough. Thank you. I, we were lucky enough to win in the auction last year, the, the Marshville Basket for the sports team. And in that was the season pass for four of our family members to come. We're, we're a big family, but we haven't missed a home game. So that's been fun. And then, um, let's see, I was at the assembly too, and that just cracked me up. And I got a very, a very loud laugh. So when I just saw Lauren's face, it just, it just cracked me up so much. But it was worth, it was worth driving into town for that. I really enjoyed it. And I am planning on going to lunch either tomorrow or on Thursday, as soon as I hear back. Which day and what times lunch at Madison? So.
Thursday, just because principals, our principal will be out tomorrow.
Great time to go and help Terry lunch there.
Terry, what would you do?
Lunch does start about 10:50 for second grade. They're done at 11:08 and then kindergarten coming in 11:10. So we have two minutes to wash those tables.
I will come help.
And then after first grade, or no, second kindergarten, first. First I'm like, I don't know what happens after second grade because I hide them out.
I was helping today and I was down there for eight, 12.
Oh, it's got very work. A new one.
It's fine. It's working out well. But you know, I mean, it's, it's loud. It's still that time. Somebody's in the gym, you know, and they talk louder and yeah, it's.
Can we get those phone phones for the bell sussies?
They said it was sound absorbing, but I.
I spent quite a few years being the lunch duty person down there. And I thought that how they have it set up in that classroom that was downstairs before it was taken out, really could open that space. I thought it was actually a little bit quieter than it used to be. And they have them organized in a way where the, the kids are not packed into the tables so tightly. And it was actually a very pleasurable experience. And I got to actually dip it in the kids' stuff today. But fault is my work. That's one of my favorite duties.
I prefer outside. I get both.
And I don't want to go in.
For years, they never let me into the cafeteria because, you know, I tend to be allowed to judge themselves about food. I do, I do agree. It is so much fun to talk with the kids.
You know, I do miss those shack meetings at Madison. Very odd, some of the school lunches.
You know, our, and our cafeteria ladies are phenomenal. They, they work very hard. And just like us, when they can't get sets, a lot of work on them. And they love those kids so much. They come out and they mingle with them. They, you know, they know them, they're part of our community. And it is really wonderful to see.
I agree. And our nutrition workers really helped my children. And they worked in the cafeteria and they, they spoiled them on and this, it's still.
And sometimes they, they even serve cookies for people who are thirsty.
I'll be there. Can you go for the cookies?
Oh, the highlights, so I've got lunch Friday at sunset. So that'll be the first time I've had lunch there since I was in middle school there.
You'll have lunch Thursday and Friday there, there's no school.
Okay, well, on true Thursday, then, you think we talked about it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll still be the only one on Friday, I guess. Yeah, and then, yeah, I went to the boys' sock game, girls' sock game. They're both really fun to watch. I, I know kids from both sides of town, so it's worth fun to just watch them go out like that. Not as much with the parent side, but the kids are awesome. And then on a, like a segment, we're talking about the cafeteria. So I, there's a shout out from Mr. Brown. He was, he helped us out at Charleston, it's where my little son gets in the cafeteria in ways that, you know, adults have never seen. And that was before pretty much free lunches and stuff. And if they were like, no, you're not going to eat, he would hook you up. He'd get you that. And if they were like, no, you're not gonna eat, he would hook you up, he'd get you that. And so, yeah, I appreciate that, people like that.
Thanks, everyone. And now we have budget committee. David, is that, are you gonna talk a little bit about that? Oh, okay, sorry.
We have good news.
A vacancy on the budget committee, but I have good news. So the new state law around equity advisory committee requires one of the equity committee members to be on the budget committee. And I reached out to our liaison, one of the equity committee members with the liaison of the strategic planning work group last year represented. And he has agreed to be on the budget committee if you all would like. And he could meet, fulfill that. And it's Danny Sotter, who I know Diane works with, he's the head of Star Hope. So he's been a wonderful member of the equity committee, and he has, if the board approves, you all approve the budget committee members. But that way, we would be fulfilling the state law around that requirement to have an equity committee member on the budget committee.
Wonderful. So we're waiting for his application to come in, and then.
I'll draw the paperwork up.
Okay, and then we can vote on that next month, or on our next public meeting?
Yeah, if we have it back by the twenty-third, then I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow and get it out to him this week.
Okay.
And then hopefully by the twenty-third, we'll be able to vote on it.
Nice. Thank you, Danny, for stepping up. And if there are other folks that apply, how does that work? Does the budget committee or the board?
Well, we have to fill the list.
Well.
So we're not.
There isn't a set number you have to have. You have to amend them. Or you could have more than one.
Yeah, and I don't, I'll look back at my notes, because I had asked OSBA about this, and I don't think you're required to.
Solicit for application?
No, I think you can appoint whoever you'd like, as long as they accept to do it. I'll, I'll double-check that and let you know. But I'm, I'm fairly certain that's, that's how it landed.
Not usually, like, people beating down our doors for it. Yeah, so anybody, I think that it would help you.
I've been talking to that.
Such a big commitment, my wife.
I had a couple of people that were interested, so if we have another vacancy.
Well, how is submit their applications? You never know. And thank you to Abby for being the chair of that for so long. Okay, so facilities update, that is Kevin or David?
Yep.
Kevin.
Okay, so the draft of facilities assessment is eighty-five to nine percent complete. So we should have a completed report on the October twelfth facilities committee meeting. We have softball facilities update. We received a survey batch with the property lines. And then a couple, just things will have to get reviewed, possibly with E S D on some property in that area until November later, I'm guessing. And we've considered networking cables and security and facility access, along with conduits stepped in, the equipment rooms in for the sprinklers in that type of facility there. The playground and fence are installed over Millacrest. And I cruise in there, it looks really neat and clean. The impact area is set up nice. The stadium project is ongoing. You know, we're hearing good, good feedback on that. The, and they're working also on honing in on who has access to different areas, different padlocks, different keys that have been around forever. And so that's a work in progress. The program moves committee, which is twice a week, and is working on devising a short and long-term plan for location of Little Pirates destinations, Academy Resource Link, and District Office. That's kind of getting an idea from the community of where people want stuff, so we don't have to move it around every three years.
So that's, they meet twice a week?
No, we met, we met twice.
Okay.
But we could go twice if we could.
That is, that is commitment.
Yeah, no, we, we met twice, yeah.
The facility maybe, if it, if it goes to twice a week?
No, it's.
I resign. I have problems.
Well, we're, we're getting a lot done, though, that's why.
So is the playground present?
It's done.
It's.
It's locked in. It's concrete.
We can't move that if you guys move.
And I, and I know from experience with another organization that moving playground equipment is problematic, just because of the safety specs. Nobody will move it and guarantee that it's safe for kids.
Yeah, they won't, you can't get it certified, you can't.
And I, I will share that, at, at least for a short-term goal, moving Little Pirates really hasn't been on the table. They seem to have a good spot there, so preliminary conversations indicate that it will stay there, at least for the short term. And get a lot more use out of that playground.
It's a really good state, nice place.
Yeah.
Visiting there, there's, there's so sweet in there.
Oh, it's so fun to just watch the little kids walk through the halls, open hands.
And then the committee, we just kind of brought up and talked about like cost analysis for pairing Blossom Gold for more use as a district-type office, and then Milner for more kid use. And then right after that meeting, one of someone down the street, one of the adults came up to me and said, are there gonna be a lot more kids over here? I was like, oh, well, we're going with this, you know? And they said they loved the idea. They, they moved there for the idea of it being a school for kids and what's going on. So that was good to hear, just.
Good, good. So are, so you guys are working on a plan to maybe move the district offices down to Wausau Beach?
That seemed to be the general consensus is.
Yes.
Move the district office and expand Altad into all of Millacrest, including Little Pirates. So just working out the, the plan on how that works and looking at how it could be funded. So, but that seems to be, everyone seems to be in agreement, which is great. So they've been very smooth meetings, and we're, we're working our way towards that goal.
Yes.
I've, I've tried to carry the torch.
Neither did he. Thank you, David.
There's a couple Little Pirates. He gave a lot of positive stuff, just to give you all a heads up. The water meter at the softball field was the E S D, and they shut it off.
Oh.
For us, for the use. We paid them six thousand dollars a year for water every year, and they just shut it off and notify us. So there is another water meter there, but it has a much smaller, I don't know what it's called, just a water pipe, it's like half the size. What's it called?
Oh, you could tell it was volume, yeah.
Yeah. So we might have an additional cost to retrench the water system. So they're looking into that. So I just wanted to let you know, we might have the unexpected water cost, because we have to have water to water the softball field. Like, we need to have water there, so that's a little pickup. And then we are on time and on budget at Millacoma. We have had some of the contingency funds, projects come up. And the big one we've approved is they needed to put a new column to hold up the overhang on the walkway down to the cafeteria. It wasn't strong enough, and so that wasn't in the budget, and that was about thirty-eight thousand more. But we have, what, two hundred and?
I think two hundred and fifty-eight, or somewhere around there.
In the contractors contingency fund. And then we have an additional contingency fund for the district, but we, so we'll still have over two hundred thousand in the contractors. But I just want to let you know, things come up when you do, that's why you have the contingency. That's the biggest price tag that's, that's come up so far. But they're on schedule and on budget so far, knock on wood, so.
So, just a quick question, because we're at the home. The Marsh project, did we get the money? We were able to spend that on the Marsh project?
We got it approved, from the D E Q approved, that we can fund, I think it's like twenty-eight thousand dollars to the Millacoma Marsh Trail. I think we're still working on the official contract we need to get them.
Yes, so I spoke with Haley at Coos Watershed, and we need a contract between the district and the watershed to allow all of the contractors to actually do the project. So that's, I just got a draft from our attorney at about six P M. tonight. We're gonna get that reviewed and finalized, so that the contractor can come in and do the work before it gets too rainy. So we're on a rush, on a rush timeline for that, but it is priority.
And remember, that was your idea.
Well, I think it was, but it was, I'm, I was very excited when they said, yes. Because I would much rather use our money if there's sure.
I, I've been getting emails from Jeremy Caradale. He also bought a grant from the Morgan Foundation and a grant from Rotary because of this extra. So Rotary gave six thousand dollars to support it. They were seeing if there's gonna be additional funding, and since Jamie has gotten all this additional funding from Rotary. So he's doing an amazing job with fundraising, and I love that.
It's an amazing place. I mean, it's a really special place.
I think we got about twenty-five thousand from the Morgan Foundation. They just approved our, our application, I think, late last week, so. We also got that similar award from the Morgan Foundation for the South Stadium project.
Well, somebody just needs to spray from the students down there.
Oh, for Millacoma?
Yes.
We, so after the parade every day.
Do you?
On ourselves, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, is there anything else with facilities? All right, David, you're up for policy committee?
Yes, so you wouldn't know it by looking at our first readings that, but we did have a busy policy committee meeting. Our attorney joined us and gave us some insight. It just required a little more in-depth work on, on her part to give us some targeted feedback on some policies. Most importantly, probably our K L. policy that needs revised. So she's working on that, and we'll be prepared at our next policy committee meeting, which I, toward the end of this month, I believe is the twenty-sixth, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, twenty-sixth, right here on the agenda. So she'll be ready with that there, so we will have a, a more loaded first readings for you in November. This policy on family medical leave, you, you may have remembered, there were several policies on family medical leave insurance that were in first reading. Then I got O S B A.'s update, and of course, they were revised again, so. Those, because the, the, they haven't landed at the, the legislature on how this is all going to work out. We're kind of hanging back on those policies, so we're not playing this revolving door of policies. They are not required policies. While we are required to follow, follow the law, and we will, we're not required to have a policy that says that. So this was a great way for us to get some kind of verbiage out there about the family medical leave, because there's lots of questions about it, without kind of painting ourselves into a corner when the laws change. So we will be waiting, eagerly awaiting updates from the legislature on paid family medical leave insurance. And then we'll adjust those.
There were also questions raised about the need to make sure that the language in the policy reflected the language that's in our contracts with our staff, that we just entered into, you know, so that was something we were ready to look.
And then there were no changes to O S B A.'s recommended, but we obviously didn't have this policy previously. So the committee elected to adopt this whole clock, well, not adopt, but to move this forward as is from O S B A.
All right, any questions for David? All right, so we are on to our action items. Approve Division Twenty-two standard assessment.
Yes, so every year, so Abby, you're new, last year I gave the board a very long PowerPoint presentation on Division Twenty-two. I spare some, I did happen to share with you. But every year, every school district in the state is required to submit assurances that we're meeting all the state requirements. So these are Oregon administrative rules that districts have to comply with, and we have to give assurances that we're complying with them. Now, I've been doing, this is my tenth year of doing Division Twenty-two. It has changed. They've added a lot more staff for compliance, so there's a lot more oversight than in my prior eight years of doing Division Twenty-two. But last year, but the board by law has to review and approve these before November first, that's why it's here. And then we have to submit everything, the assurances and our plans for how we're going to address the standards we're not needing by November fifteenth. So that's why you're seeing it today, because you all have to approve it. We have to send the link to the minutes from this board meeting to the state as part of our assurances that we're following state law. So first, I want to brag a little bit, because last year was a heavy lift. We redid the way we reported on it, and we added the evidence column, what's our pieces of evidence? We had never done that before, so it took, like, poor Chad had the most of them under his error responsibility. Took him hours and hours, but he just reported, he needed so much faster this year, because he already had all the evidence in there, so. And I just want to brag, the great work they did, O D E. has us, they have a sample Division Twenty-two, like exemplars. And Coos Bay is now one of the exemplars for the state law. So there are two, last year we had three, we didn't meet. This year we have two. And the two, one is on page twenty-three, and it's the standard about a plan, the district has to have a plan for prevention, education, and drugs and alcohol. And we partially meet this, and you'll see in the evidence column, we do partially meet it, but we haven't, we don't have a separate standalone plan. So Chad is working with the social emotional learning committee to develop the plan. And there's actually a woman from the county who's an expert of substance abuse prevention, and she's gonna work with us to develop that plan. Anyway, so she's gonna help, so we'll be working on that this year. And you have a year to remedy it if you're not compliant, so we'll be fine. And then the other piece that's related to that is self-reported, right? Yeah. Yeah, self-reported. And then the next, the other one is on page twenty-seven, the postponement of purchase of state adopted instructional materials. The state has a curriculum adoption schedule, it's like a seven-year cycle for every subject area. And so every year, you're supposed to adopt a different subject area. For a long time, since two thousand and eight, most districts haven't had the resources to be able to do it in option every year. So a lot of you fill out a form and explain why you're not doing a curriculum adoption. Coos Bay is amazing. We are pretty up to date with our curriculum adoptions, mostly. But we decided intentionally this year, this year was a math adoption year. But last year, we're supposed to adopt math and then internet this year. But we cut, because of the new reading curriculum for K six, and it was such a heavy lift to learn the science of reading, we intentionally, we didn't want to overwhelm the elementary teachers by giving them last year a whole new way to teach reading, and then this year a whole new year. So we gave them two years to implement reading. We are doing a math adoption for next year, so that's off by a year intentionally for best practices implementation for our teachers. And then the other one goes along with the previous standard, we need to do a health adoption, a new health curriculum adoption. And that will have substance abuse prevention curriculum as part of it. But A, again, for the, particularly the elementary teachers, it's a little overwhelming to do a health adoption right now. And in two years, in twenty twenty-five, the state, it's the end of the seven-year cycle, they're gonna have new health standards and new recommended health curriculum. So we want to postpone it two years, because we don't want to do the adoption now, and then in two years, be out of date with the new standards. So, well, that's the other one. But there's a reason why we're intentionally not needing those. I, I think a very valid instruction element, so. Those are good. And then everything else, we're in compliance with it.
Yeah, when I, when I was first on the board, we hadn't done any curriculum updates in a while, a while. Finally, we got back on the cycle, and started updating everything as it comes up year on year.
Which is fabulous, that we can keep instructional materials up to date.
Yeah, it was all, it all depended on the budget. It must work. Yeah, it works really well.
That is.
I think I counted Chad's name almost thirty times in his documents, so.
Yeah, he had a heavy lift last year, and he did very.
Way to go, Chad, you're out there.
He's driving to Wilsonville for the Arts Guy Conference, that's why he's not on.
All right, if you watch this later, shout out. Works for you.
I'll be a great time.
Oh, you're unmuted again, yes, absolutely. Thank you for everyone that makes this happen. And so, approved Division Twenty-two standard assessment, we want to.
Totally.
Thank you, Abby, a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Are any, any discussion? Good job, everyone. A lot of work, but it looks a lot better, and I can give you a few to the evidence column. I think that's a great addition. Um, let's do a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Arnie?
Aye.
Igo Iswell, motion carries. We already, um, took care of our mock audit, and so we have adopted four goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we're in the packet.
Should be the last page you're back.
In our last page, and, um, we had some trouble finding our last updated goals for the board, um, because we had worked on the social emotional piece back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And to, you don't have that, do you?
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Twenty-fourth goal. And with that goal, um, in COVID, and so we had to pivot a few times. So that was roughly the, the last goal. We, we tweaked it a little bit to work with online learning and then brought it back, because we recognized that it was a important goal to work with the students, and it was to minimize, uh, disruptions in the classroom. And, um, it was lengthier than that. And this year, uh, we went with a different direction at our board workshop. And one of our goals is to go back to our board self-assessment. And we've done this a number of years, but, um, we didn't do it last year, so we're gonna have that this year. And then also, number two of that goal is focus on superintendent support and the evaluation process. So with that, it's board development and training, attending conferences, relationship with our administrator, and improving communication. I'm sorry, David.
That's all right, you can see.
You could've just said no. I, I, I really just went over it.
Okay.
I did sort of, basically that was it.
Darn it.
I just wanna make a clarifying statement, because this came up to me at cabinet. Um, I was asked, um, what the district goals are. So I just wanted to clarify that the board adopted the district goals when they adopted the strategic plan. And those are the district goals. What you're voting on tonight are goals for you all as a group, what you all, the board wants to be working on versus the district goals. So I just wanted people listening to understand that there's different goals.
And, yeah, so in the past, it's been what, how the board's gonna support the district, like, we had math, we had reading, we had social emotional, so this is just kind of a, a change there, so I could see people some good in this. This is focused inward on us, and I think that's good. So do you want to make a motion to approve our vote?
I'll make a motion if we're able to.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Arnie. Is there any discussion? Are you a supporter, Arnie?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
All the people's working well. Diane?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin. Igo Iswell, so our board goals are approved, and next up is our future agenda items.
I, I am, I did vote, yes, under the assumption that our board's controlling them.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can change them.
Yeah, we can always add things or.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we typically update them annually. And so sometimes it's, you know, we can add other things to it, or we, um, can change the direction altogether if we find the district is struggling in a certain area. And we can, so sometimes it's about supporting the staff and what they need as well, so. Thank you for that. Any future agenda items that people want to see?
Definitely, I would say, both of us, just with, uh, knowledge, I want to think we got plus seven. I think executive meeting for every board.
Yes.
For us, so we can follow up on it.
Thank you so much, Arnie. That is a great idea. I can't remember who came up with that. Was that you?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna give Arnie credit for that, so, um, actually, before each of our board meetings, we are gonna go, we're gonna have a small executive session to review, um, our goals and our superintendent's goals to update on progress. And so we're hoping that they won't last very long, maybe fifteen, ten fifteen minutes pending, and, um, we'll hopefully be there once we are having a formal update.
And we're doing this as part of our superintendent evaluation process, correct?
Correct. So thank you for those.
I love, I love knowing that people wanted this meeting, I'm glad that our Booster Club does so much, um, for us. And, um, it is a well-run machine, the Booster Club, um, I don't know if anybody knows Tony Clarkson, but I would love just, like, for them to come in and give some information on all the things that they've done over the years and just because, and this is volunteers. Tanya's the one who runs, Tony Cutters is the one who runs, um, like, you know, the concessions and, and with all of that, and, and it's really, um, it's a bonding condition, and it's a, it's a passion, you know, and I, they do a lot, and they give back a lot of money and things. And so I think it'd be interesting to have them in sometime.
I'd love that idea.
To have Booster and just come talk about what they've done and what they do, and it, it's a really great group of people.
I volunteered in the, working the stadium and the concessions, that's a tough job. And it's, and it's not just, um, sports, the Science Club, National Honor Society does concessions, like, all kinds of clubs. And so they're, they're really diverse in, in who they give to with the conference.
A lot of them.
So, yes, they, they're neat.
And it's a great fundraiser for those clubs as well, because they keep a large percentage in the sales for their groups.
Wonderful.
So do we wanna shoot for that for November?
That would be wonderful.
Um, can, if someone has a contact information for Tanya, if you could send that to me?
Sure.
I'd be happy to reach out.
I think she's also in charge of, like, senior, um, like, parents, senior graduation.
Is that Marley or is that?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I have Tony's number, I can get it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. We're gonna be arm wrestling for the kids, they're senior students.
We'll just make this one even longer.
I know, we're not, you can get.
Everyone's like, what?
The fun part is giving them the moment. Yeah, that's just, you just need to, like, body check Mr. Ashton out of the way, so you can get them.
Okay, so, any other future agenda items to probably adjourn to? So, meeting adjourned? Thank you. Bye, everybody online. Sorry, I was late and wanting to try to shoot. So, I was dying.
I thought you were gonna be a good year for what?